Alright. We all set?
Yep.
You're live.
Great. Alright. Would you all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thank you. Anything we missed for the agenda?
Um, do you want to, uh... Read the executive session? For our evaluations?
I still don't have mine for, uh... I don't have mine for Nancy Blue, so why don't we read the 26th?
No, 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 but we were going to do Katie tonight. Are we ready to do that?
Oh.
Just her part of us as the court of law.
Right. Uh, it's up to the board, 'cause it's the four of you really, more than anybody.
Yeah, because you sort of do yours separate.
Yeah, exactly.
Ariana?
Um, yeah, yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
I mean, I'd also like to... I feel like there's some of the budget discussion that has to do with personnel. Some of the evaluations we already got should be done in the executive session.
Okay.
Though I think it would probably be best if we had at least the board salary discussion at a regular meeting rather than an odd night.
Me separate?
Yeah, just have... 'cause I'm assuming we're gonna have more after tonight. This is just the...
Run through.
The run-through, and we'll identify any thorny areas.
I...
Like consensus on thorny areas.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that because I think that we should have budget discussion. I mean, we have, we're having this special meeting. We should discuss the budget as we wanna discuss it and not hold off on anything because I don't wanna wait till the last minute on any of it.
When do we have to set the budget by the board?
The final budget has to be adopted by May first.
Yeah, the hearing is April 15th.
April something.
Mm-hmm. So we've got another meeting on the 26th, so I figured tonight and the 26th should be enough time to have budgets. Two meetings should be enough to have budget discussions.
Well, let's see if we can get as much done tonight.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea. Um, alright. Let me put this away so I'm not distracted. Allegiance and public comments, consent agenda. So the bills and claims last, 'cause Rebecca and I have them done by the end of the meeting. Alright, so, well, I wrote the thing, so I assume you guys have the notes on it?
Bills and claims?
Yeah, but later, at the end, after we've signed them all. We've got another two dozen. I guess I'll leave it to you guys. I mean, I've been over and forth over this for a couple of months with Nancy and Rebecca. So is there any place in particular you'd like to start or flag?
Well, I was going to suggest, Jason, since you're in the midst of, but you may have them done, so it wouldn't maybe matter, but on our non-elected... I mean, I'm not calling that elected. On our non-elected salary increases, I was thinking that we would remove those increases from the budget lines and place that total sum in the contingency line until the evaluations are completed. And we also, for the union employees, I would recommend all those increases that you're showing be put in contingency because the new contract isn't settled.
What's, what's the benefit to doing that versus just leaving it in... I've been reading art history books. Um, leaving it where it is and simply changing it where it is when we find the numbers?
Well, because...
I'm not seeing the...
Well, generally, when you place it in the budget by individual names, and I'm just gonna talk about the union now, that implies that a certain percentage is going to be awarded, um, by contract. And we are nowhere near ready to settle to contract. So we may settle for less, we may settle for more.
So leaving...
We wanna use some of that backwards. And so I would recommend the whole sum be put into contingency until such time as the contract is settled. For non-elected, um, because of the new evaluation process, um, that you are implementing this year, you may want to recommend somebody for 4% and somebody for 2%,
Right.
which would average out to 3%, but presumably, because you are doing the evaluation, not everybody's gonna get the same percentage.
Right.
So that's why I would recommend non-elected.
And, and what about union? Um, because what I have in now is 3% across the board 'cause we don't know what the contract is gonna say?
We are nowhere near settling.
Okay.
So I would suggest the... I mean, it's totally up to the board what they want to do.
I mean, all it would be doing is moving it from one side of the worksheets to another. It wouldn't have changed the total amount until later.
It won't change the total amount. It'll change, it could change the apportionment.
Right, right.
And it does not, and it also is not leading people to believe that they are going to get a certain percent, percentage when they may or may not make it upon your evaluation of them.
What do the rest of you think?
Well, I have a question in terms of, um, union contract and, and the, you know, the expired contract and putting it in contingency. Are we obligated to give the last year's rate? Like, the, the last year of the contract, give that raise moving forward until there's a new contract?
No, it remains at the salaries that they are at when the contract expires. Longevity and that kind of thing, yes, but not...
Okay. So I think their last, the last raise is 2.5%.
And if you look at the contract, it's, it's listed specifically as year one, year two, year three of the contract.
Right, I know.
So there's, yeah, but, so because of that, there's none of that presumption. You have a contract that continues. I think all the, all the parameters of the contract except for the raises continue. Like, we gotta give them a good allowance and they get a certain number of days off.
But you may also settle with retroactive.
Right.
So you have to think about retroactive and then for this coming year. So I would recommend that it all be put in contingency.
Tom, Rebecca, do you have any strong opinions on that?
I don't have a strong opinion about it, but I wonder, is the, the primary issue not advertising in advance that there would be a pot of money and thereby creating expectations that could lead to difficulty rather than that is an internal technical issue?
Right.
If that's the case, then I would defer to those of you who have been around longer and you know what the expectations of personnel are.
I don't think there's any expectations, 'cause at this point, people just kinda get it. So they know, do the union employees know that their salary is based on the union? Do the management know that it's based on our final numbers? Uh, but if you think it'll cure things up, I don't think it matters one way or the other.
Well, Ariana, you also are engaged in negotiation. What do you think?
I mean, I would not have thought of it the way Sally has put it, but I'm certainly not opposed. And I, I mean, based on how negotiations have gone so far and where I think we're at, I would imagine we'll be, I mean, as long as we actually set up a meeting soon, that we would be able to finish it sooner before this fiscal year is over. So, um, putting it in contingency for now would not be a bad idea.
It's not a bad idea.
No. Just because we don't, you know, I think what's, you know, the, the expectation of, you know, a certain percentage is, you know, could be there.
Well, I, I mean, I know how people can, you know, reify something like a budgetary, a tentative budgetary figure.
Right.
So that can happen, and if we, if we can avoid that by putting it in contingency without jeopardizing any other negotiation, then I suppose it's okay with me.
Okay, cool. That's fine.
Okay. So, um, we'll move those. I guess instruct Nancy to move them, 'cause she knows where they are, budget lines specifically. What's next?
Corollary to that, and I don't know how other people feel, but I do not think any employee who has been hired within this year and has not been with us a year should get a salary increase.
I agree. And, and, um, the, I saw the IT position had an increase. We don't even have anyone in that position.
Right, and that adds a percentage increase.
I think it's pretty ridiculous to increase that if, uh, nobody's even working there.
Alright, any objections?
No.
So we'll have Nancy make that objection.
But we do agree that you should be with us a year and evaluate.
Yeah.
Well, in, uh, no, no, we're talking about this.
Don't bring it up.
No, I'm just wondering on the, uh, do we need to mention, do we need to include in the personnel expenses under department manager who we're actually talking about there? The $10,000, uh...
I wondered about that.
Oh, that was, that was to continue what we're doing now with Nancy.
Yes, it's to increase, it's to add this task to Nancy's...
Right. The same way, 'cause...
And then Blue also.
Right, another, to basically do it for another six months.
We, we should put in that it's Nancy Branco.
I don't think we have to.
We don't have to?
No.
'Cause these are, I mean, these are the works that we can. It's, it doesn't hurt.
I mean, everything else has a name attached.
We were going to evaluate this in six months, Jason.
Right.
So would that be a good thing to put in contingency also? And then...
Put the whole amount in contingency?
If your recommendation, well, Jason's recommendation was until May 31st.
Right.
We would do this. And then evaluate it and determine whether that should continue or not beyond.
Okay.
So, but we're two and a half months away from that period, and both Blue and Nancy, um, think that it's going well and there's more to be done, so that's why I put it in there, but contingency could work.
Well, that's why I think putting it in contingency is a good idea.
I'd move it to...
'Cause even though there's more to be done, what if in two months we say, well, we, we only wanna do, we could, we only need to do it for another three months?
Right, right.
And it's only $5,000 as a first step on.
I would do that.
That's fine. Any objections?
No.
As long as, Katie, you're making a note, obviously, of what we're moving.
Yes, I am.
So we remember what's there.
I'm making notes.
Okay, good.
And then you and I can review them.
Yeah. Alright. Well, actually, is there anything else that would fall in that category of things we should move in contingency?
I don't have anything else.
Well, one, uh, I don't know about moving into contingency, um, but there was one thing that came out in my review. That is, uh, we had money this year for, uh, comprehensive planning. And, uh, we will not have spent all that money during this year. Does that simply carry over because there's no money in next year?
No, it would go back into the general fund, but we would simply remove it from the fund balance as needed.
Okay.
If that's the case. 'Cause we budgeted the whole, Katie, do we budget the whole, our whole share of that or half of the share?
You don't want to short your fund balance.
We've got, we've got plenty, we've got enough.
We had money, we had more than enough money.
I think we should budget it and take it out of fund balance.
Yeah, no, we're saying the same, six of one, half dozen of the other. I'm just saying...
We're doing the same thing.
I'm just saying, yeah, that if, if our share of the master plan...
We need to budget.
Can't extend past June. If, anything left over goes into the fund balance. So next year, we just take that amount out of the fund balance, and it's the same thing as...
I would, I would budget for it because we committed to it, so I'd show it in the budget.
Even though we have it in this year's budget range?
It doesn't roll. It does not roll.
No, I understand that. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
So, okay, so, uh, Kelly, I'm having a flashback. Um, Katie?
Wow, that's a few years ago.
Yeah, it's a few years ago.
She's outstanding in being, so I take it as a bonus.
And a very gifted clerk, yeah.
Nice person.
Do you remember the total?
Just make a note that...
It was, it had to...
So Kelly, make a note that...
I get it. Okay.
That... We would have to make it, the, offset that with other revenue, because it's a, it's a revenue-neutral proposition. Meaning, we would be taking it out of something or raise the fund balance by the same amount that we're adding to the budget, because the money's going into the fund balance. And I'll, I'll talk to Nancy about the mechanics of it. But that, that also shouldn't adjust the final numbers on it.
No, it shouldn't.
It should just be the balance of the one and two.
Right.
Alright, what else?
No else.
Flowers? Not a big controversial issue this year?
Not yet.
Flowers?
Street lighting. We agreed...
What number is that to you?
Um, 85182. We authorized putting up more streetlights along with the college, Ariana.
Right, yep.
And I don't, I could not find that in the budget, and I don't know whether it's just in Blue's budget or whether we didn't put it in, and I don't know how much money we're talking about.
Well, the street lighting is part of Blue's budget, so it would be in here.
But it's a question for Blue. Did he add the additional street lighting?
How many do we, do anyone remember how many we were gonna look at?
Ariana, do you remember? Was it five?
Five.
Okay, so I'm just gonna question, are five additional streetlights budgeted, right?
Yeah. Are you gonna talk to Blue about that, or should I talk to him?
Uh, I'm just making notes.
Okay.
It's also in the minutes that I'm taking, so I definitely will see them fairly shortly.
And I couldn't see it because he didn't break it out, and I looked in the worksheets.
It doesn't look clear to be that way.
No, I don't think so.
No.
I can't get anywhere else. It would be hidden either.
I'm thinking that since they have not gone in yet, uh, you know, in terms of budgeting for them, one of, one of the things, I mean, certainly these energy companies talking about LED lights, um, you know, maybe we should, like, I asked that central head team what the options were, and LED was not one of them.
Did they say why?
They, they just told, they told me what the options were. You know, and it's sodium vapor or mercury vapor.
What was the housing? Like, you can't just plug in an LED light into the socket?
Well, I think that they, I think that they would cost us money. I know Rosendale is looking at doing it.
What, to switch bulbs?
Yeah, to switch the LED lighting, and I think it does cost money.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much money, but it saves.
Money for something we don't own either, which is kind of weird, since we pay rent, so the central...
Right, I understand. Um, but...
So we might have a question. What?
I mean, yeah, I don't know. What are we, what are our thoughts on this? I mean, I don't know how quickly we can act on it to include it in the budget anyway, but...
No, no, but Ariana, I'm trying to, so I can make a note. The, the question, we know it's not in the current budget.
Right.
You're asking how much more would it cost to...
To do LED lighting, yeah.
How much more? New question.
I can call Rosendale tomorrow. That would be great.
Ask them if they have...
Also, because if, um... I, you know, it's possible, are they looking to purchase them, Rosendale?
I believe they are, Ariana.
'Cause that, you know, that would be an option for us too, and certainly wouldn't, wouldn't hurt.
Right.
We don't have any public, I'm gonna swing around so I can hear Ariana there.
Oh, yeah, why not?
Okay, so I will call Rosendale tomorrow and ask them what's going on, what's going to cost, what they're actually doing, to be able to report back in an email to the trustees.
Cool, thank you so much, Katie.
Oh, that doesn't have an arm. I'm reaching for the arm while I'm looking. I noticed nothing.
We don't wanna lose you.
Okay, so that's a new question. How much more to do LED lights than what we have?
Yep.
Oh, at the end of the meeting, could you get one of these for anyone who doesn't have one? Anyone out of the Village of New Falls?
I do not have one. To buy now.
I wouldn't have access to it, but I will get it for everyone first thing in the morning. I wouldn't have access to the Village of New Falls.
Brenda's gonna be here today.
Oh, I would like to put $15,000 back in the trustees' budget for consolidation issues, should we decide to do...
What consolidation issues do you foresee?
Well...
And what number are we looking at? A1010?
We're looking at A101.
A what?
A1010.
1010.
Is the trustees' budget.
It would be under...
Now, the question we used, here's the, what Tom was asking earlier. We took money from that $35,000 for the joint master plan, for the, this year's part of the joint master plan.
Right.
So do we just wanna leave that money in, which would cover the joint master plan? In other words, the next year, and just carry that forward?
Well, we would've paid...
I meant, I understand what you're asking, but...
I think the whole thing was gonna be...
We would've paid $12,500 as of June 1st for the master plan.
$55,000 divided by half was 20...
Well, you can see it right there in the columns. Uh, $35,000 was put in the budget.
That was for consolidation.
Yeah. Oh, you mean for the master.
We used some of that this year.
Right.
We transferred it over, and we had a balanced left. My question is, do you wanna just leave that $35,000 there, which would cover the rest of our obligation for the joint master plan next year, and then would leave probably about $10,000 balance?
$20,000 balance? 'Cause if it's, if it's half of $55,000 and we've paid half in this fiscal year...
We haven't paid half. We paid about...
Well, we will have paid by June 1st.
Yeah.
So it should've been one quarter of the total in this half of this year, one quarter of June to December, right?
I thought it was, it would have to be...
I know we had a...
That's what would have happened, had everything been timed.
Started early, but we didn't start in time.
Yeah, didn't start on time.
The time that we start paying occurred.
Not until February 1st, right?
So this is a month behind.
Yeah, well...
So that would mean removing it from contingency, the...
Yeah, take it out of contingency and just leave it in the trustees' account right there. I mean, it's, it's, it's all just bookkeeping, so...
So it's where you're gonna move the money to.
But it would be also, you're looking at an increase in this over what, the tentative budget, because...
There's nothing in the tentative budget.
For consolidation.
For consolidation.
Right.
Nothing at all. And there's nothing for joint master plan.
No, we have the master plan in here.
What line? It's not...
We have a whole separate sheet for the master plan.
Oh!
Where do they...
Then that may be...
Stick it to... See, I should've asked Nancy to be here tonight. She... She asked, and it just didn't...
Is it after law, Jason?
No. As far as I can tell, there's no actual meaning or order to these, these numbers.
I didn't even look for this code. It would be a new...
Yeah, but you can stick the new ones in anywhere, you know?
What would be your planning, do you think?
Probably. Well, you'd think, but the state code guidelines don't seem to have much of a rhyme or reason.
What's the word for planning?
It's one of the last ones.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, 8020?
That sounds about right.
Master Plan Consultant.
You have it?
Yeah. $15,182.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about it. It's in.
Yeah, it's in here. It's not in contingency.
No, so we don't need it in contingency.
Right, and we don't need it in the trustees.
But now, no. What I'm asking is, may we put $15,000 into the trustees' account? There's nothing for consolidation at all.
I guess my question is, what, what would, is a foreseeable need? 'Cause, I mean, I've been following the emails about the meetings, but I haven't seen any...
The efficiency committee is going to recommend a referendum...
Okay.
...to the joint boards. What the joint boards do with it is totally, but the efficiency committee will be making a recommendation.
So how much, we already have money budgeted for next year's election?
This would be November, so...
Oh, it wouldn't be in the May? So that would be not even this fiscal year, or, or, you don't mean in...
This November?
Five months from now?
Yeah.
And that would not be...
And wouldn't that come out of the town, wouldn't that come out of the Town A Fund? Because it would have to be, as a town-wide election, it would be run by the Board of Elections, so we wouldn't actually pay anything. Well, we pay through the A Fund, but not through the Village Committee.
Right, it's not village budget, but we would need to have hearings and probably...
Is that covered already under the legal notices for trustees?
I don't think so. I don't think it's there.
And we don't have, we don't have a limit. Um, do we, actually, do we bring that out? Legal notices, 500. But we also have legal everywhere, I mean, we have legal, we have legal everywhere through the budget, so... And, or, so there would be no actual election, running the election expenses. There would be no, no significant public notices, because we're just looking at an extra public hearing or two.
If, if we wanted to do this correctly, it would be the village would be having an election at the same time the town would be having an election, because it's the village government and the town government that are voting to consolidate.
So it would be a town-wide...
And there's legal, gonna be legal questions.
It's, so that, you could actually break that out easily, since...
I would think $10,000.
The election districts are broken out and match the municipal boundaries. So the village election, the village residents, 1, 4, and 9, basically only those machines would have a village question, or, I don't know if it would be the same, but...
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's just, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to walk down the road to see where we're, where we would be spending how much money through the, through that...
You would budget $75,000 for...
Assuming everything goes smoothly, and this is what happens, how much is it really gonna cost us?
Well, that's where I'm gonna look and see what Katie has budgeted for an election in the village.
I think it's like $2,800.
How much?
I think it was $2,800.
Okay, and that's your legal notices and everything, right?
Yeah, I'm, I can write this in.
And then...
I had overestimated.
No, we need to wolf rank for any additional...
I just see like a little kitty fund for that, but not like anything, not, we don't need five figures.
Yeah, $2,795 for, for the election. It's $2,795.
And I did select a higher number because it's May 1st.
And you were using the county machines.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think that, that would be good coverage there.
Well, that's for, that's for everything to run an election of 7,000 people, so we don't need even $2,800.
Oh, you might.
We would just need, well, no, the town, assuming the town is running the actual machines and all that, and inspectors, as they should, if it's town...
I don't know legally whether that's true. I don't know whether we have to do it separately. And the town outside the village does it separately. That's...
So you're saying, what, like, $2,800 would cover us just in case?
Yeah.
And then we'd just use it for something else if we don't?
The thing is that if it's, if it's a town election, how many, alright, Dana and I were just talking about this. How many, um, locations are there that villagers vote in?
One, two, no, they're all three.
Dale Hall, the middle school. And Dale Hall, 'cause it's one, oh, and campus.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's three.
Yeah.
So it would be, you know, this is the cost for two scam, two scam ballots, or no, oh, it's $2,000.
The village only has two districts when you're having a village election. But when it's a town election, you're gonna street is what number is district number.
Oh, no, no, when you have a village election, there's only one. So this is the cost of one election location.
No, two.
No?
One election location, but two districts.
Two districts.
The village has three districts, 1, 4, and 9.
Right.
But there's one location that you can vote at. So that 1, 4, and 9 becomes three locations that you can vote at. So that's what I'm saying, like, in this $2,800 number, $2,795, but $2,800, um, is for one location. So if we multiply that by three, is something like what it would cost us, although there will be...
Right.
You know, there will already be like election inspectors, or, you know, there will be something, some cost that might be rolled into it, but basically...
Isn't there an inspection, an election this fall anyway? Yeah.
There, there's an election.
So there's no additional expenses for, for booths, for rentals, for election inspectors? This is just another ballot question?
Yes, but, okay, so when I go vote at the middle school, it's not just district. It's like separated 1 and 5 and 4 and 6.
I don't know the logistics of how this is...
I believe are how it's separated. So when I go to the mid, like, I used to go to Dale Hall, and I did, but I wasn't voting, I used to be in District 1. Now I'm in District 4, or maybe it's the opposite. But either way, I used to vote at Dale Hall, but I wasn't voting with other villagers. I was voting with townspeople. So, and the same thing with the middle school. It's separated by north and south of Main Street.
Except every District 4, every District 4... Except every district four, every district four, machine is a village machine. So, you could know how the village voted outside the town by just adding up one, four, and nine. There's nobody who lives in.
Separated by district when you go vote?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, there's no additional expense for running the election?
It's already happening.
The only additional, the only additional expenses is the ballot question, which is already being printed anyway, but since the ballots being printed.
Would that be considered part of Will's retainer or above and beyond?
It'd be part of his retainer, it covers everything. It covers everything until the hours are used up.
We would have legal questions that we would want him to explore on our.
Right, which would be included as his retainer.
It is.
Yeah, anything that comes up.
Then let's just put five thousand dollars in for our part of the election.
But that's the thing, but, but.
It's already.
It's already, it's already being, it's already being paid for. We don't have to pay for anything additional for the election. We're all gonna go vote for Congress and whoever else, it's up this fall.
Are they gonna be able to differentiate without charging us? Villages?
Yes.
Yes.
Because only people who live in the village, the only people who can vote on, on machines for districts one, four, and nine are village residents. And all village residents vote on those three machines.
But the machines are not different. This is the thing. You go, you, when you, when you go and you sign in, that's separated by district.
Right.
But once you vote, it's all the same.
Gee, I'm not sure they, when I go.
Cause you don't, you don't have a machine.
I thought the ballots registered which election district it came from.
I don't think.
No, I think they're all the same.
It's just.
Well, does someone wanna?
Signing in.
Does someone wanna find out, find this out between now and, and March twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Cause this seems like something we can't really, we need more information.
I think certainly we do.
Okay.
Katie, we mustn't. Yes, I absolutely will.
All right, so we'll put a little asterisk there.
Okay, Katie checking. Lecture mission across.
All right, what's next?
Small thing.
Yeah, what number?
I'd like to actually go back off.
Tom had something.
This is back in the, uh, trustees budget. We have an actual six hundred for this year and we're projecting, uh, tentatively three hundred.
For?
For printing and copying.
That's based on, everything in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen with some obvious exceptions, uh, is based on what we actually spent versus projected, so we budgeted six hundred.
See here.
Uh, you have those.
All those other sheets?
Yeah, you have those where you can see.
I didn't compare, I don't know, cause I can't.
We have a balance as of the end of February under contractual expenses, twenty-seven thousand six thirty-six left. Okay, of which.
I just can't do this.
To renew, um, the computer renewal rental or whatever it is is coming due. And the service contract for the copier is coming, that comes later. So, we'll probably end up, Jason's right. We don't need it.
We don't need it.
Nope.
Because a lot of your, this is, this is trustees only.
Yeah.
So, a lot of things happen in all their budgets, yeah.
Some things are one-time item expenses, but they won't necessarily be expended until, say, April first, and then you get hit with it.
Right.
Whenever your contracts are due. But even with that considered, I think Jason's budget projection is correct.
I'm happy.
And I also did look at the, everything in Nancy's office, so I did see the, yeah.
I have my worksheets if anybody wants them.
Okay.
But the thing is that these, these other sheets that say how much is expended don't have the same breakdown as the worksheet, so I can't see. Like Nikon conferences, is that a question about that? There's, there's Nikon conference for, and there's additional conferences dash Nikon slash other. And we had, I, I could see where, you know, there was two thousand, now there's nothing. There's three thousand, now there's four thousand, um, you know, for the coming year. And I just was wondering like, okay, well, did we just not spend that two thousand on Nikon conference?
No, that's.
When, like, you know, and that's not stuff that's on the other sheets.
And a lot of it won't be because, well, that, that's one change that would be noted.
The total of all this is what's on the other sheet.
Right, um, there are more breakouts and actually we can get copies of last year's budget worksheets, obviously, for anyone who wants them. Uh, that one in particular, um, I realized that there's no reason to break out Nikon as a specific conference. So, I just, I load it, I added, add the two up, but order by a thousand based on what people actually want, uh, went to. And then that way you're not restricted to going to Nikon if you run out of the other money. That's really all it was, is why, why restricted to Nikon only?
I mean, it makes sense, I was just curious, like, if we didn't spend any of that two thousand, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, that's why, this is what's actually.
Nobody went to Nikon conferences this past year.
Yeah, I mean, I know I didn't go, it was not.
So, I think it's fair to merge them together.
No, that's not true, cause Stuart and I went, no, that was two years ago, nevermind.
But you can still use this other stuff from Nikon.
I went to two conferences here, but they weren't Nikon, so I think.
No, this makes sense.
I would encourage us all to try to go if, you know.
If we can.
But I think the four thousand should cover us.
No, I think it should too, I think that's fine, my, my question was more about like, there's nowhere that says how much was or was not spent.
All you've got is how much was budgeted, yeah, and how much was spent.
Like, I had the same question as Tom with the six hundred to three hundred.
And when I'm, and when I'm sitting down with Nancy looking at last year's worksheets and then the actuals, that's what we're figuring out.
Right.
But, but you're right, it's frustrating to me too, because I'd like to have an automatic program that had the budgeted and then the actual and have our tracking system track whatever we use on the worksheets.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, but the state software doesn't allow for that.
Software program in there for that purpose, don't you?
We looked, but it just doesn't do what we thought it was gonna do. We never bought it, but, um, no, the state, the state, the software that we have for the, that we, that works with the state in KBS doesn't allow us to, it tracks a different way, it's very frustrating. Except, except you'll notice, except you'll notice that the fire department budget does it in-house, they do it on their own.
Right.
So, they actually put it in every little worksheet.
What can we use there?
I'll have to talk to Nancy, well, it's just, all this is Molly with an Excel spreadsheet.
I mean, won't you buy a software?
No, no, it's not a program that does it automatically, they're entering it manually.
It's just labor.
Is what Jason said.
But they do have, the fire department does have a new computer software program.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Brenda.
Hello, Brenda.
Do you have some advice on the budget? Are you really curious?
Yes.
Here she's got the scenario.
I, I can ask you all about, um, the planning building department, um, needs and just wanted to stop in and see if you have any questions about that, possibly giving Denise more hours so that she can have a steady schedule, um, if it's more than just one and a half days a week. I would love that, I think the department would.
She said she didn't want more than that when we hired her. And that she had one day scheduled in, because I asked Katie for her schedule and it got very confusing, didn't it? And she said that the other day was not logged in as a specific day, but was flex day depending on what she had to do.
Okay.
And I would love to see you take a hold of this department rather than asking for new stuff until you have it really under your wing and functioning the way you think it best to function. Then I think.
So, has she expressed, and she, she's actually looking for other part-time work, isn't she?
She was looking for other part-time work and I knew that budget discussions were coming up now, so I wanted to take the opportunity, if this was my only chance for the next year and a half, to say something. She has expressed that she would be interested in more hours. And right now, she's working just Wednesdays and a varied schedule, and that's why.
We take her for two days.
She works Tuesday evenings and Wednesdays. And then if she has additional hours, she works somewhere else, but it's not a very set schedule right now.
So, how many hours extra, I can't recall?
Fifteen.
A year?
She's got fifteen a week.
How many extra is she, how many more is she looking for?
Well, if we did a ten to two every day, um, that would bring it up to twenty-two. Ten to two plus Tuesday evening would be an extra seven hours, but I believe it would jump into three-quarter time, which means you would have to look at, um, benefits.
I don't think we have to. Heather's three-quarter time, I think.
Heather does no benefits.
But she's, she's in two different jobs.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We brought that, that came up when there was.
And so, it's one of our building inspectors is twenty-seven hours a week.
I don't.
Maybe it's eighteen.
Yeah.
What do you need? What do you need?
I'm not against getting a better feel for the department, but I've seen so far that, because everyone's schedules are so jagged.
Yes.
Um, a steady schedule every day would be awesome.
So, having a human being actually in the office every day, even though a short day.
Yes.
Would be better than having somebody at, on Tuesday nights and one whole day.
Absolutely.
Continuity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah.
So, a nine to two or a ten to two would be awesome.
Yeah.
And I've liked her initiative too.
I think so too, she's got some great ideas, um, she's a hard worker, and I'm just, the only, the only flaw that I'm seeing so far is that she's just not there.
I'm for it.
All right, Anna, what do you think?
Um, I mean, I like the, I, well, I know Brogan, um, so I feel like I don't wanna be, I mean, she's not, we didn't like grow up together and not like life like friends, but I, I know her, you know, from outside of her working here. Um, so I feel like my, my opinion and my weight on this is maybe somewhat biased, but, uh, well, I don't think it's biased, but I want to do full disclosure, that I guess is what it is. Um, I do like the idea of having somebody, I mean, the complaints I hear about the building department is that people come to see with somebody and nobody's yet to do it, like the door is locked. Um, so, you know, does somebody interface with the community more regularly? And I think if we had a totally different, you know, like if village hall was set up completely differently, this wouldn't be an issue that we're facing. Um, cause there would just be somebody there that is, you know, representing the village in some way and interacting somebody, whether or not the building inspector was present. But if the office is locked, I mean, I was here the other day and Rosalyn was standing in the hallway and, you know, she had questions and luckily Brenda came up and from downstairs and was able to help her. Um, and then Rich came back and Holly came, or not, Rich, Mark came back and Holly came back like right afterwards, but you know, by a period of time where the building inspectors are out, it would be good to help somebody.
Well, you've got Holly, you've got Brogan, Rich, Mark, Brenda.
And, I mean.
And for so long, I wanna finish the thought.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
The building department has been very screwed up, as we all know. Now, it's starting to coalesce. And before adding more, I'd like to see a plan and a cohesion, not just gee, I'd like to have. Because we hired Brogan and the planning board secretary and the ZBA secretary, they meet once a month. There are agendas and minutes to do.
Twice.
And.
Twice.
Got it right, super planning board. And there are minutes to do and agendas and all that. And the extra time, we thought, would be spent in the office organizing the files that are very much in arrears. But I haven't seen the, the, I mean, I get good vibes, but I don't see the cohesion yet because Bren is just brand new and she's taking over. You know, and I think it would be good, I don't mind, I wouldn't mind putting some money, again, in contingency.
I was just about to go there.
To, you know, plan this out. But I don't wanna commit to it now until I see.
Yeah.
A plan and an approach.
I think, I think we're seeing the plan and approach.
Yeah.
I don't think we've been here long enough to see the plan and approach.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, because the, the, um, schema that we came up with with Brogan was based on our experience. None of us having worked in the building department, and now we've brought in Brenda who is new here, but not new to the trade, so to speak, you know, the, having worked in planning offices before, knows what works and what doesn't. That expertise is part of what we're hiring, so if now, a month or two in, I'm hearing that we need to rearrange staff and a few more hours with a talented new hire, I think that's a serious, I think we should, you know, take the consideration seriously. Whether we put it in contingency or just outright do it.
I don't disagree, Jason, but what I'm saying is, we never had a planning board secretary and a ZBA secretary who then, who in addition, we budgeted extra time for, to be in the building department to start getting some of these files done. That is a new concept and is just being implemented.
Right. I have an idea.
What's that?
Um, cause Sally, Sally, what you're saying is like, you know, you said you'd like to see a plan. So, I think, I think maybe what we can do is come, is, and maybe, maybe you can do it with the department. I, I had a department meeting, which I think you had, right? Um, so maybe, maybe that's something where you could sit down and come up with, you know, the five month, the six month, the year-long plan. Um, you know, and have some timeline deadlines for some of what Sally's saying in terms of getting records in order. Um, and I think I would like to see somebody who is interfacing with the public more often, but maybe we can do this as part of it and, you know, have a review in, you know, maybe it's like quarterly. You know, you could have, the plan could be something that's quarterly, and these are deadlines, and when we, when you think about like what your department needs, you know, in the next, cause it's been almost, it's been a full two months. Almost, month and a half.
It's been a month.
Yeah.
So, if we, if we get to the three-month mark now and then, you know, do it again and again, then maybe that would be, I mean, what do you think, Sally?
I think that's, that's very reasonable.
Okay, and then we can put it in, we can put it in contingency, I know, I noticed that she's looking at other part-time jobs and I would not, would not want to lose her, but I also think we should make, you know, very rational decisions.
And I, I really think Brogan has a lot to offer. I'm just not, I mean, she's really good, but I'm still seeing at ZBA meetings where we don't have the history of things, you know, when, like before the planning board. A project comes up before the planning board, um, you know, there's a project before the planning board that's coming to the ZBA that I'm not even sure should be at the ZBA given the zoning laws that Jason introduced last year and we all agreed upon a pass. And there's that kind of, a cross purposes still. And I think we need sort of a written plan on how to get the whole thing coalesced. Okay, because I think somebody's gotta tell the planning board, gee whiz, look at the back files. And just because I've changed the name of my property, I need to go back to the, the original name of the property and see what the history.
Well, we've got two months before this budget is even implemented, and in that time, we could certainly look at this stuff and think about it more and we could put it in contingency. But Rebecca has something.
Yes, um, well, first of all, I think we should also ask Blue's opinion, I don't know if you've had the discussion with him?
He's, he was off today and then, no, I have not talked to him about it.
Okay, cause I think that would be my, a good idea for him, because obviously he's been overseeing everything and is, is aware of the different changes and definitely would be aware of the needs too. And what I'm also thinking, because we have people, you know, basically the staff in that department are in and out of the building, as we know, but also when we've got some people who are part-time, not everybody sees each other on a daily basis, and I think having a single person that they can all, um, be in touch with, and where that person on a day when someone who was there the day prior, a different person is, comes in the next day, if there's anything, um, outstanding, you know, any, um, loose ends that need to be passed on to the next person, it's much easier to do if you've got someone having the conversation with everyone in the department.
Yes, well, that is, I mean, you work here every day and so does Holly.
Yes. Certainly, Holly is obviously, Holly has obviously has the longevity in our department, she knows the history of things more than anybody else does.
Totally.
Yes, but the challenge is, um, is exactly what you just said, that we have three part-timers right now that work very different schedules. So, what we're doing is having the same conversation over and over again to bring everybody up to speed. Um, and absolutely, I agree that part of my job is, is to be in the office and to be talking to the public. But I have another aspect of my job as well, that, um, isn't necessarily making twelve copies of, um, something for a board. um, something for a board and getting all that ready, and absolutely, Brogan's doing a great job with that, but she would be better utilized with more additional hours.
For example, they, what do we call it, Jason, the big?
Albatross.
Huh?
The plotter.
The, the thing?
Cohoon.
That you thought we should have.
Hyundai, uh, no, the plotter, the, yeah.
The big, the big thing.
Yeah.
That's still sitting in the DPW garage.
Yes.
And that's just, isn't, to my mind, because you said.
Brenda hasn't, Brenda hasn't needed it yet, so.
I, I have requested my computer program and once I get my computer program, I can use the plotter, but.
But it still should be up here. It should not be sitting in the garage.
I'm excited about it. I'm excited.
So I think, I think that's the kind of thing we need to get.
Yeah, well, Jason's also talking about moving those file cabinets out of there.
Um, yeah.
Which I'm not sure what stage, but basically, I, I think what you were saying was for, um, the clerk's office to clear out files from in there?
Yeah, what I was thinking is moving, 'cause we have that, the office downstairs next to Nancy, which when we finally get an IT person, we're gonna stick them down there, part-time, but move all the files that are up here down there, so that when we have time in the clerk's office or Ryan and Sekim on it, get all the originals out, make sure we don't, we have.
The one file cabinet can't even be open and it has been locked for what, a year and a half? Nobody has a key for it?
Well, we'll just call Ken Hasbrook, have him open it.
But, Jason, I didn't have to call Ken Hasbrook.
Well, I didn't know it was locked until just now, so.
Well, Nora told us that, and how long ago was Nora here?
Nora should've made the key.
Okay, and Nora went through all the files.
Right.
I think.
Well, there's, there's just junk everywhere, is what I'm saying. We can make room in that office for the plotter, we, I mean, probably we can get rid of all this stuff, 'cause no one uses it anymore.
Oh, see, IT and shade tree use that file cabinet.
The one, right, the ones who do are used, obviously, we're not gonna touch, but, you know, the ENCC one, we can get rid of the, you know, just, we can get rid of some of the clutter, that's all, and have room for.
Right, but my point is, that was ready to be removed long before Bren even arrived.
Oh, I know, I know, and now it's been so long that we don't know who.
Who did what?
Who did what?
Well, Katie and I are going to, and you're all invited to join us, ten thirty tomorrow morning, we are cleaning house.
Good.
So that you can.
Get rid of that chair back there.
Since, so that you can oversee the painting of this.
I'm gonna oversee the painting.
Did I sell out of?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, the broken one.
Let's get rid of that.
The pink one back there is broken.
If you wanna join us.
Mo.
Ten thirty tomorrow.
Burgundy, whatever color it is.
Whatever.
Okay.
We're talking about, uh, approximately sixty-two forty, if you added eight hours a week. That's not including fringe benefits, though.
No.
So are you sure it would require fringe benefits? Do you know that? Yes?
Three-quarter time certainly would.
So anything under, anything eighteen point seven-five hours or less does not require benefits?
I would go with fifteen, Jason would be on the safe side.
Well, how much do we, no, uh.
It's, it's eighteen point seven-five, 'cause that's what.
Is that fifteen now?
A lot of form.
Yeah.
She's at fifteen now.
Yeah, so Ariana just found out that it's anything that's three-quarter time or more, you have to offer benefits, so.
Katie texted Nancy.
Oh, Katie texted Nancy, so that means eighteen, eighteen point seven-five hours a week or more, that's the threshold.
Good.
For the moment.
Not that benefits are necessarily something we should turn our nose up at, even for part-time employees, because there are less benefits than.
But for the moment, if it would resolve, I would be willing to go to eighteen hours and see if that helps.
What do you think about that?
I'd have to talk to Brogan, um, if she would take it, that would be something.
Well, when she was originally hired, you two interviewed her, and she wanted a part-time job and not more than a certain number of hours, 'cause that was your recommendation to the board.
What if we just, what if we did for her what we did for, with Heather?
A separate position.
Secretary to the planner, as well as secretary of the planning board. Give her another five hours for that, it's a separate position.
Hmm.
There, there's a question whether or not that would, then you have to be a union job because of, because it's come up as a conversation, whether or not that's a union position.
What if it's not secretary? What if it's an assistant?
We'd have to ask Nancy.
I think we're really not.
No, these are all options.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well.
Especially because I'm hearing that, that is a lot of assistance to the planner that, that we need, as well as a planning board.
I, I'm not opposed to this option, but I think for, for tonight, we should table this conversation.
That's a good idea.
Get a lot of our questions answered before.
And have a recommendation and a plan.
Well, she, I mean, she, she did write to us for to, you know.
No, no, but I wanna know hours being spent doing what.
Okay, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
And I think we need to get Blue's opinion as well as Nancy's.
Brenda, why don't you, you, Blue and I, sit down this week? Because there, there may be other other options on the table.
We don't have evaluations from Blue.
From Blue?
Yeah.
No, not yet. I'm supposed to get them.
That's why I wanted to put everything in contingency, 'cause there are a lot of outstanding evaluations that aren't there.
Sounds good.
And what else? There was something else, right, Brenda?
Was it on the same email?
Before it?
Um.
It might've been the conversation we had.
As far as budget is concerned, um, I can give you a couple other things that I wanted to, to play with.
Did we have enough money in this year's budget to buy the GIS software we need?
Yes, we have money left over.
Good.
Um, and for next year's budget, the training for the building department is at fifteen, is tentatively at fifteen hundred. I'd like to double that, 'cause they didn't include me.
Okay.
And I've looked at AICP training and certification, and if I can get into the test for this year, then, um, this coming year, I'll need to start required training.
Your plan is?
Looking at.
Thirty-six, twenty.
Thank you. Uh, training, training, training. So it's right now at fifteen hundred?
Yes. I'd like to double it.
At fifteen hundred more, Jason, the contractual expenses?
Yeah.
Does that sound unreasonable to anyone?
It sounds reasonable to me.
And this is for?
Training. Training.
My training.
Building department.
Fifteen hundred was just for the building department without the planner.
I think, look, the more we can invest in training, the better. I think it's money well spent.
Okay.
Just a minute now, I, we have, we have not resolved anything in terms of increasing hours or.
No, we're tabling that. We're tabling that.
But this we are agreeing on fifteen hundred?
Any objections?
Yeah, none, not for me.
Okay, not hearing any. What else, Brenda, what do you need?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll get us a?
I'll give you a, a schedule of timelines and where hours will be spent, and Jason and Blue and I will chat this week as well.
Yeah.
Jason, then we should.
If you want me to go down to the vault, I'll have to go right now, or.
What's that?
If you want me to go down to the vault, depending now, I'd have to go now.
Um, no, unless someone really wants a Village of Newport pin right now, otherwise we can put them in your mailbox.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
Just stick them in the mailbox.
I got fired without it today.
How, 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 anyone know you're on the Village Board?
I did.
You go.
I got banned, so I got fired today without it.
Oh, okay, you did.
I think you should, like, wear one, carry one, trade them where you go, we'll make you little shuttle boxes, it's like Disney.
Do we have enough money in for digital? I know we are applying for a grant, but I'm tired of hearing that we aren't digitalizing because we're waiting for a grant.
What?
We have records that, we have talked and talked and talked about getting our records
digitized.
Whenever Ryan, whenever Ryan is in the clerk's office, that's what I have him do, and the volunteer from the high school who, um, who I've had, who I get for fifteen hours, that's what I have her doing is scanning records, and we've got.
And the deputy clerk was hired to do this?
She, and she does a certain amount of scanning, um, she does the more recent scanning, whereas Ryan's doing things from the records, so we have enough.
The building department would love to be scanned in and, and digital as well.
Yes, we, we have an Intranet that I have been working very hard. That I've been working very hard on, loading things to and getting this calendar up and running, um, that's where hopefully, a year from now, you'll be able to sign on and see the historical records.
Love it.
Looks like.
Yeah.
Hard to find.
Probably. Close the door.
Okay, so we've agreed that make sure we're all on the same page. All salary increases are going into contingency, employees who are with us less than a year, no salary increase. Okay, um, we're gonna move Nancy and Blue's stipend, the stipend itself into contingency, so we're not taking anything out, we're just putting it in a different place.
Right.
Um, we need to find out if the five additional streetlights that we authorized are in fact in the budget. We wanna know, and this is a new question, how much more do LED lights cost than what we have?
And Katie said she will call Rosendale.
Pardon?
Katie said she will call Rosendale and find out what they're doing.
And Katie is checking on the election machine costs, and we're adding fifteen hundred dollars more for training in the building department. That's where we are right.
And just so you know, we don't have to go, necessarily go through every page, um, the water and sewer funds.
Yeah.
Um, we're not, not calling for any increase in rates.
Um, no, we're.
So we should, we should be good on the water and sewer funds, yeah, so.
We took a care of all that and built that in a year ago.
So what other earmarks do people have on here?
Okay, you have an A eight oh one oh.
Eight, eight two.
Uh, you have the, the ZBA attorney is showing as being on a retainer. She is not on a retainer. She is paid per diem as needed and not much.
Victoria's.
Victoria is not on a retainer.
Well, this is, this was from the ZBA, so.
She is not.
I didn't rate this, but so it'd be.
'Cause when we hired.
So just cross out the retainer, could be just monthly costs per month?
Well, no, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have, but you were, now where are we with executive session? Always in the executive session.
Well, should, wait, about this, I mean, wouldn't Nancy Branko know how he, she in this case is being paid?
Well, that's what you can see Nancy's handwriting is, is the, the tiny one next to Brogan's.
Nancy and I have been over this time.
You have been, okay.
Okay.
So what, what, what number should we have in there, whether it's retainer or?
You've changed, I'll look, let me go.
It went from four thousand to two thousand.
You, that is for the planning board, and I have to say, I think that is a mistake to reduce the planning board retainer down from four thousand to two thousand, because this we go through every year.
Oh, I know, and, and I still.
Maurice says for six thousand, you say two thousand.
And we end up.
Compromise on four thousand.
No, no, actually, we end up spending two thousand. We end up spending what, um, well, anyway, I, I, you know, I wasn't even gonna have the argument with Maurice, because in three years, I've been waiting for a good reason to have the amount we paid the planning board attorney triple, and I haven't seen one yet, is what it comes down to, but it depends what the board thinks.
Well, I think.
I lowered these down to what we actually spent over the past fiscal year. That's what these numbers, they're not arbitrary. So we spent about two thousand, not, rather than the four thousand that's, that was written in the budget.
That's what we said last year and then we got, so I think, I'm gonna ask that that be discussed in executive session.
Okay. Um, okay, I have a question on celebrations, A seven V five fifty. We have budgeted for Johnny on the spot for the regatta?
Yeah, we used to budget for two.
I, I see that. Why are we budgeting for Eddie?
It's our contribution. That's what you said.
No.
No? You don't want one?
No, but not when the mayor's, is quoted in the paper as saying that the Wall Hill River is a sewer. I don't think I would risk the insurance having a regatta.
But certain people have seen swimming in the Wall Hill, so.
Yeah, and I got violently ill the day after.
Did you really?
Yeah, I've never projected out of my, in my life like that.
I wanna make a very quick report on the, uh, tour of the, uh, reservoirs and the we, most recently, report on Wall Hill by our exploration team. Right now, you could swim in the Wall Hill if you could stand the cold.
I don't like it's warm enough.
Uh, right now, the Wall Hill is clean enough that you take a very, uh, easy, uh, process to make it portable. Our reservoirs are fantastic right now. They're, of course, covered with ice and there's no evaporation, and they're absolutely full of beautiful, clear water right now, so.
Let's just stop, let's just stop, stop there, just stop there.
So we're.
Nothing more, I don't wanna hear what adds in the summer time.
Anyway.
When agricultural runoff starts coming in.
I think, I think.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, right now.
Yeah.
So we say we, we don't wanna pay for a porta potty?
I think the regatta should be self-sustaining, like any other parade that we're making on events, I guess.
Yeah, we don't contribute that to anything else.
We don't? We don't contribute anything?
No.
No?
No.
No, but this is the, also the only thing that's not, um, doesn't end up near Gilt Hall or the park, where we do have Johnny on the spots all, all summer in Hasbro Park. And this one, I think, because I, I asked Blue, because I know you don't need a certain number of bathrooms downtown.
There's Water Street Market bathrooms.
Mm-hmm, that's why this one goes, this one goes down to the actual boat launch itself, so we don't have to walk all the way back to Water Street Market. But I'm in favor of keeping it in, but I, I don't, if there's a majority opposed, then it comes out, so Rebecca, what do you?
I, I wanna take it out.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, we, we, our contribution is that we hold the funds in our trusted agency account, and we spend time and resources from our departments to expend those funds, so I think that's a good, that's how the village contributes. Otherwise, why aren't we contributing to other events? And I hear what you're saying, but, you know.
How mu, how much is?
The Bodyguard Dance Festival was downtown one year.
Hundred and sixty bucks.
Yeah. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's the idea that we're, you know, we're contributing with Johnny on the spot in the Hasbro Park, because it's our park.
Well, that's our park too.
Right, but if we, if we're gonna do it, we should have it there all the time or none of the time.
We were gonna have the Rudoroff built, so.
I'm, I'm more interested in having something there all the time than just the one specific event that we favor for something.
The only, the only problem I would see with having something there all, all the time is the potential for vandalism.
And flooding and cleaning.
Well, we were gonna have a burglar alarm on it, that was his idea.
A giant cleat light comes on.
Don't you, don't use it properly, the alarm goes off. Well, so, I, I agree with you.
I would keep it in there.
I, I'll keep, I'd rather keep it.
One porta potty, I would.
I, yeah, I'd also rather keep it in there.
Then, Tom, I think you have to, to do that for every single event.
I don't, I don't think so.
Baseball Association is far more a community event, that parade, and they have an event And they have an event down on the ground.
Oh, I know, so?
Provide the porta potty for them.
Well, the thing is, is that for public events, and we learned this at the hundred and twenty-fifth, for public events, you don't need to have a restroom if the event is within X feet of a certain number of.
So then why is it?
Because this event, the regatta, because it stretches from Main Street all the way down to Sojourner Park and back is outside that radius. So we didn't need one for the hundred and twenty-fifth and for the post office parking lot because you had Water Street Market and the Gilded Otter and.
Where are you putting the porta potty?
Because in Sojourner Truth Park, where they actually put the boats in the water at the boat launch. The farthest point away from everything else. That was why Blue thought it was a good idea. But what's your opinion? You haven't said much.
Yeah, the other thing, in addition to, well, first of all, it's not a great deal of money. It is our park. And if we were to turn to the committee and say, you need to put it in.
No.
You know, I.
They've got the Gilded Otter, they've got Water Street Market, they've got a lot of access.
But you also have people sitting around. It takes a while for the regatta to actually get off. And you have a lot of people down there, a lot of kids down there.
Well, I'm hearing three people in favor and two opposed. Do we wanna let it rest at that? Or do you wanna discuss more?
I mean, I just, I just think we really, you know, there are plenty of things that we could contribute to through the celebrations fund that I hear a lot more about than this. For instance, why don't we have decorations and lights in the wintertime? This is like such a huge thing that I hear very regularly. And you know, we're not, like, I think, I think that should be something that we can, I mean, I'm not saying it's one or the other. I'm just saying if we're putting things in the celebrations line, I think that's something that should go in the celebrations line.
Well, I'm more, I'm not as concerned about the porta potty as I am concerned about the village carrying the liability for the regatta, which I am absolutely opposed to.
Yeah, me too.
I do not think our insurance should be covering the regatta.
I think if our insurance company knew, they would be displeased.
If that's insurance policies or not.
But if that's insurance, it's different than swimming in the river.
We don't carry the insurance. We do for a bonfire now. And we did for the one hundred and twenty-fifth. But I do not think we should be doing for the regatta.
Our parks are insured anyway. So anything that happens to the park or the rail trail is covered now, just in FYI.
I would like that for the insurance.
Right, but the regatta's in the river. That's the difference.
I mean, I don't really have.
Are we insured for swimming? But this is a separate conversation.
I don't know. I mean, it's a park use.
Yeah, I would find that to be, I don't know that I would be in favor of providing our insurance on a special basis for anything. But I find that to be significantly different from the issue of whether a single porta potty at a strategically, well, no, tactically important place on a single day for a cost of a hundred and sixty dollars. They're so fundamentally different in my point of view.
They go together, yeah.
That I don't wanna mix them up.
Yeah, the thing, also, the Regatta Committee has a notary there every year. Because people who are entering the regatta, if they're going to be on a boat, they sign a liability waiver that gets notarized.
I don't think anybody can ever sign a way their right for insurance if it is already provided. I don't think a notary liability.
We should've had Nancy at this one.
Yeah, we real, that's a question for Nancy.
And also, Ariana and Sally, you can see, I actually had also flagged that in my copy too and talked to Blue about it. So you're not, it's not unreasonable to object to it as well.
I've got it on the list.
So separate on celebrations, what do we think about adding some kind of winter decorations to this?
Do you have a price or?
I can answer that.
No, I only thought of it right now.
CIT, okay. Community Improvement Team.
Yep.
We have switched over and the village now does the hanging baskets in the summertime, which the town used to do.
Okay.
Okay? The town and the CIT are supposed to be doing the winter decorations.
Okay.
Okay, so we will put the pressure there.
Oh, good.
All right?
All right, what else is on your guys' list?
That was the deal that we agreed to and one-sided the aisle. And I don't know whether it was the CIT failing to tell the town or what, but that will be straightened out.
Those are all my notes.
Do we have a recommended grant writer? Because I'm not gonna budget money for a grant writer if we don't have somebody.
Using in my mind, we're using Mark Flower by default.
I thought he wouldn't do the kind of grant writing we wanted.
At a certain point of the year, that's absolutely true. Because remember the whole CFA, the consolidated funding application came up where all these grants are due at all at the same time now?
Right.
That's what we ran into some problem because we, Mark has to work on our water and sewer, the big items. So he doesn't tend to do the park stuff. But that's once a year.
Yeah.
The rotating stuff or.
The Safe Street Grant.
Yep, and that.
You and I were really hot on that.
And that's part of the CFA. But here's the thing, if we have grant, if we have grant money now to have Mark, for example, to pay him to research what grants are out there, we could then, if it's in the CFA process, farm it out to somebody else. But we've got a grant writer we can trust who's, you know, impeccably honest and brutally honest with us. That's what I was thinking.
Is that your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, but that's my personal recommendation. But more importantly, because.
I want your personal recommendation, that's why you're recommending.
There may be somebody else out there who's as good as Mark, who's not, who doesn't do that kind of grant. I don't know enough grant writers. But I figured, I talked to Mark and to Nancy about.
Well, Nancy.
About how much, like, I asked Mark how much it would cost him to prepare like a smaller grant, like a fifty thousand dollar parks grant. And he was saying like, you know, maybe a thousand dollars for the package, something like that.
Wouldn't we want to interview somebody with Nancy?
We don't have a position though. We don't, we, this is just a.
We do have a position. We have five thousand dollars in the current year's budget.
We've got a budget line. We don't have like a position position, like we interview and hire for.
No, no, you're missing my point.
Okay.
We budgeted first year, five thousand dollars for a grant writer. We did it again.
Yeah, and I wanna.
For a grant writer. We've never matched the person to the grant. Nancy sent us, and I think you wanted to be an audit too. She was going, we had that proposal and we were gonna all meet with that grant writing team. Is that what I call it? But nothing has come of that yet.
I can only think of two grant writers I know.
No, no, Nancy has this.
Here's a list, okay.
What was it called, Rebecca? And Ariana, you said you wanted to be an audit too. She was going to invite this group who does grant writing. You had a question, she answered it. Yes to whatever it was. Then she said, when they come, who wants to be a part of meeting them? And I think you did, and you denied it.
Oh, 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 um.
But we haven't heard anything yet.
Yes, yes, I know what you're talking about. I cannot remember the name of the guy.
No, I can't either.
Um, I know exactly who you're talking about.
The three of us said we would be interested.
It's not Camico's that.
I don't think it was a person, it was.
No, it was a, like a group.
Well, regardless, it's not a bad idea to clarify this and maybe get it into a.
So are you recommending that you will go out and get a grant writer for us and we will budget fifteen thousand dollars?
I'm suggesting we budget fifteen thousand. We use Mark for what we can. And for what we can't, we have this parallel.
I wanna find somebody.
Okay, but we have somebody, but they're just not around the whole year. So we need, we need a backup person.
Jason, I don't care whether they're this month, next month, three months from now. I would love for the village to get some grants for things like save streets.
Right. And that's what this, and that's what this is, that's what this fifteen grand before would be for the.
But I don't wanna see you next year talking about this again.
We got a note from Mark about what amount of time in.
I think that's a good idea.
In the course of the year.
But I do, I like the idea, I like the idea of getting other grant writers too.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we really need.
And we know that Mark is really good at what we use him for now.
But Mark says he doesn't do small grants. He's told us that. He doesn't do things like parks and, you know, invite.
He doesn't do some categories.
There are categories he does not do.
He does do small ones, but he has, he's an expert at certain things.
Right.
And so that's all it is.
He is, I know he's.
So we'll have fifteen minutes spent on somebody else.
But grant writers tend to know each other.
Well, let's get him to tell us what he does do, what he will commit to.
And when.
And when.
That's a good idea.
And then let's go find some other person who does the other stuff.
Because then we can plan, we can plan our work. Because then if we know that Mark's available spring and summer, we can say, okay, guys think.
Parallely to that, good grant writers know other good grant writers. And he may know some people.
I was a pretty good grant writer.
Some people, I can talk to.
Bosie's has some grant writers. Really good grant writers.
Yes, that's where I'm going to go.
Great. So I didn't hear you to send about the fifty grand.
I'm okay with that.
The price tag is okay. We just gotta figure out who we, who we wanna, how best to use the money? Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, because the return on investment tends to be, if you have the right people in place, the return on investment is gonna be very significant.
Yes, but you have to get the people.
You have to have the right people or you're throwing.
Hey, and we've got.
At this point, any people.
We've got three months until the end of the fiscal year until this money will kick in anyway.
Let's, so we've agreed.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad about that. Because that was, that was a good increase.
Executive session.
Eric Brock may also know.
Oh, Eric, actually, Eric may, might be able to write some.
Maybe do them, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Two things. First, I wanna go to the fire department.
What number?
Just the whole thing.
No, I'm just, oh.
Number on the sheet.
On the answer.
It's a.
Has the, has the budget been reviewed with the fire department?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's their budget.
Thirty-three ten, I'm sorry, not thirty-three ten. The one after thirty, thirty-four ten.
It's gone up.
It's gone down.
No, it hasn't.
About forty thousand.
What's gone down is when you put in the debt and the reserves and the awards, that total has gone down. But from budget to budget, operating has gone up. And what I would like to suggest is, are we serious, Rebecca, about wanting a new truck? Are we going to try to do that? Then I would like to have the fire department review their budget in light of their desire for a new truck and get some money out of that budget. That's my suggestion. Because that's a major expenditure. And yes, we're gonna bond it and all that. But you know, the more money you can put upfront to pay for something, the less debt you have on it.
Right.
So I would like, if they are serious about, and I certainly support it and I support all of your hard work, Rebecca, on this, I think they have to get something, they have to make some major cuts in there.
Well, what do we think about the truck that I do up in?
Well, that's why it's for Rebecca.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm willing to commit to that.
Right.
But I am not going to commit to it if they're not going to.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You're willing to commit to the truck in May before this budget.
Well, we're gonna start the process in May.
Right.
Right?
I guess it would come out this budget.
But I think they need to reduce their budget if we're going to make the commitment to help them get the new truck. I don't think we can continue to.
You, this, yes, I agree with that, except maybe I'm skinning this too quickly. I don't see anything where large increases were offset. I'm just looking, I'm just seeing a forty thousand dollar last operating budget this year than last.
That's including the reserves and all of the.
The debt payments are staying, the service award. Where's the debt, where's the?
Jason?
What, what number am I looking at?
Use your green sheets.
Thirty-four ten.
Now, don't, you can't look at that.
You can't look at that.
No, because that includes.
Reserve fund contribution.
The reserves you carry over, you know, all that stuff. What you have to look at is budget to budget expenditure report.
But what other fund besides the reserve fund that they use?
When you go to the fire, the original budget for this year that it was adopted by the board is four hundred and twenty-one thousand, six, two, nine. Okay? The budget that you show there, your worksheets incorporate things like the reserves and all of that kind of stuff, the awards, that's in a different category. So I tried to compare budget to budget, this budget, and it's about thirty-seven thousand increase, okay?
Which are offsetting with more reserve? Which they're offsetting with more reserve?
What I want them to do is get the money cut out of there if we're gonna buy the new truck.
Okay. Rebecca, what do you think you'd use on?
Yeah, I'll talk to them. I'm trying to meet with them this week anyway.
Okay.
Outside of their regular meeting.
Now, this is with the understanding that I am supporting what Rebecca is asking and recommending and for the future, and that is this new truck. So, I mean, if nobody agrees with me, then I'm not gonna go that way. I'm saying if we agree.
Oh, I definitely think we need the new truck.
I do too.
And we're gonna need two more in the next few years of the real.
So, so what I wanna do is offset. If we're gonna go and I'm committed to go that way. So, you know, what you recommend and come up with, and between Will Frank and everything, I'm supporting that. But it's with the understanding that there must be some reductions.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we agree on that?
You probably mean not so much deductions, but a different line for that truck. Where they reduce the.
What I wanna do is I wanna, the more we can pay. Jason wants a new truck. It's gonna cost sixty thousand.
I understand.
He's gonna budget over here. I have ten thousand, I can pay, but if I can pay thirty thousand, that's what I wanna do.
Okay.
So Jason.
I get it now, yeah.
Okay.
Tom is done with his notes. And so it's, and Rebecca and I, these are our notes. So Ariana, Sally, what else you got?
I'm still going.
No, I see your sheet, yeah.
Well, I think my, a lot of my stuff needs to be done in executive session.
Okay.
Okay. I know in his worksheets, he attached the Big Belly recycling. I mean, we really should do this.
Oh, the solar compactor, it's expensive. What line, do you have the line?
I recommend we cut eight, one, six, oh.
Rubbish and refuse.
What I wanna do, it's garbage and refuse. Take the four thousand dollars out of trash cans. We budget every year, four thousand dollars for trash cans. This year, we're gonna buy one Big Belly with that four thousand. We're gonna buy a second Big Belly and possibly two more Big Bellies. So we'll end up with three. Because right now, we are paying overtime on weekends to two employees for fifteen minutes. But the way our contract goes, it's two hours per person, okay? Just to empty garbage cans. If we had, first of all, we set a tone in the community. Because I think, if you see, it's easy to recycle and easy to throw your garbage. And that compacts on top of it, you're only emptying it once a week instead of.
But it's only one bin once a week out of thirty or so.
What do you mean? If they're only, if I'm paying for two hours overtime every weekend for fifty-two weeks, to empty one trash can, I am really upset.
Oh, I see your point. All right, let's say, because I'm looking, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the numbers here. So let's say you want the trash compactor.
Yeah. You want the two bit, the two bit.
But there's two, there's two different versions. For four thousand, two hundred and forty, you can get the trash compactor with the fullness sensing receptacle.
Yeah.
For three grand, you get the double recycling garbage that has no compactor, just senses when it's full. This seems a huge waste of money. So we would go for this, which is about the cost of replacing a couple of bins. Say, the obvious place to put this is down by the Plattekill lot.
I wanna do three.
Hold on, let me, hear me, just walk, walk me through this, or let me walk through this. So we have this double bin, one for recycling, one for garbage. We put it down by the kiosk, right, by Ariel Books or whatever it's called now.
Yeah, I know where you, the municipal lot, near there.
Down by Riverside and Theses. But, so we've now got six containers there, or four or six containers there. So this replaces two in one of those heavily used areas for four grand. It doesn't affect our pay at all.
Yes, it does.
Because now you're doing twenty-eight cans instead of thirty. And you're still doing this one, just maybe half your other week.
No.
What am I missing?
You're missing, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do weekend pickup at all because the major pickup is Main Street.
But we can't afford to do, unless you're thinking of spending eighty thousand dollars, you can't afford to do all of Main Street.
No, no, this is an experiment. You could be wrong. I would put one at Main and Plattekill. One, and this is up to Blue, because I, he knows better than I.
Yeah.
I had suggested Main and Plattekill, Chestnut and Main, and near the bakery. I had suggested Main and Platicul, Chesnut and Main, and near the bakery, that area, which is a lot of.
Say, well, just say three places.
So, three.
Wherever they are, there's other, yeah.
I believe.
So, twelve thousand dollars.
Yep. One of those twelve, one of the four thousand is going to replace the garbage cans that are in the budget and we don't need. One is going to be replaced by overtime that we are expending on weekends.
But I don't understand how buying better garbage cans means they don't need to be emptied anymore.
These get compressed, so they don't, they don't get.
Right, but not as often, but.
What, they can be emptied during the regular work week, when garbage cans are emptied, instead of asking people to come in special.
But we still have to have them come in for all the non-new ones we buy.
I don't think, I, I'd like to try to see.
It's very, it's very.
Let's see.
Let's talk to, talk to Blue, because, okay, because.
Blue doesn't.
Having walked down streets on a Saturday afternoon and seeing everything outside of the pizza place and outside this shows.
People will use, I believe people will use these if we make them available.
Oh, sure.
Rhinebeck has had tremendous success with them.
Did they, did they replace all of theirs all at once, Steve?
No.
They swapped it out?
And they, I don't know how many they began with, but they did begin staggered to just see if it would work. And then, the next year, they increased them, and they have a much bigger area to cover than the Village of Newport stuffs.
Why don't we spend the five thousand dollar one and get the one that can do compost recycling and.
I don't think you would need composting. I think the two, and I would like to recommend, we get three of them.
This year.
It did this year.
Could I ask how much we're now spending on overtime? What is it that we?
Seventy-five thousand dollars on personnel for garbage and refuse.
But that's total, that's total, right?
That's forty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars, and Jason, some of that is contractual to outside.
Yeah, they gotta go through a second.
But how much do we spend a night for the overtime that we would be saving?
Multiply fifty-two times forty dollars times two.
Okay. So, a hundred and four times forty.
Fifty-two.
So, that's four.
Forty, zero, eight, two thousand eight.
So, four thousand five hundred.
So, it is four thousand sixty dollars.
Yeah.
That's one, that's what he said, one more, big double.
So, we would not spend the money on the, uh, the bins, the new bins, the four thousand in the tentative budget for new bins. We would not spend the overtime. We would therefore cover two of these.
And we, I don't know how much we pay for outside contractors, but I'll bet you it's at least a quarter of the twenty-six thousand dollars for outside contractor.
What is the outside contractor that you're thinking like garbage? Is it the, the weekend, um?
Jason, the outside garbage contractor, is that weekends or during the week?
We, we hire him to pick up all the recycling, resting the bins on Main Street.
Oh, I don't wanna increase our budget. I would like to recommend.
You think it'll be a wash? You think it'll be a wash?
I have a question.
And it will be a savings, Jason, from now adding to nothing.
Yeah, I mean, what's the life cycle on these things?
I would like to propose that we get three of them and let Blue figure out where he wants to take the money from. I, I think I, it can be found.
Of course.
Dude.
It's, it's all in the.
I couldn't remember, so I got added in the packet.
It's in the packet.
And I would recommend.
I, I have a question. The campus house, is right?
Yeah.
Have we talked to them?
Just, and John recommended, that's how I.
John Shoup said that they're good.
Yeah. John, John McEnroe was who.
Oh, that John McEnroe is who you talked to.
Okay. That's how I got the name of the company.
So, so.
He does not think.
Did he give you any numbers?
For what?
On, on waste reduction or anything?
Yes.
Show it, proving that we get enough sun, make them work.
When they had trash cans, they reduced garbage pickup and reduction. Now, that may be, I don't wanna make that promise, because it, it's a different environment and it's different population. But what I'd like is for us to try three big belly, the com- the, the two bin compactor one, Jason. And let Blue figure out, I think we will.
Did you do the math on, on adding in all of the overtime and the recycling contractor?
The overtime is.
To see if we could afford to do all of them all at once?
Oh.
All of Main Street?
I didn't even ask.
Because if we're, if we're spending twelve grand for three, and that doesn't really reduce, cause we've still gotta pay the recycling guy to come out. But we've still gotta pay the computer to come out on weekends for the non-new ones.
Only, but you're only gonna play the recycling guy probably once a week as opposed to.
But that depends on how much three recycle, you know, so I'm just wondering if we can get rid of the recycling guy, get rid of all of the overtime. Could we afford to do all of Main Street?
I don't know, that's a question for Blue.
Yeah.
And I don't think we'll, Blue asked him.
Could you make a note to check with Blue about that? Thanks, Katie.
My, my quick, you know, off the cuff calculation of what you're recommending sells suggests to me that it's gonna cost us at least upfront forty-five sixty.
No.
If we buy three.
If you buy three, that's what I thought, but you see, the recycling guy is separate from all the overtime people.
All I can calculate is what I can calculate. So, I'm, I'm reducing the twelve seven twenty that would cost for three by four thousand dollars, which we would not spend on bins. And the forty-one sixty that we would spend on two times fifty-two times forty.
And then you have four thousand dollars, I believe, for the recycling man.
That I don't know, I didn't notice.
Well, you're not gonna know.
But we can't reduce the overtime on.
But that, what Jason is asking a different question, and he is asking, see, I'm, I was only suggesting three. Jason is saying.
I understood.
Is it possible that we could do all of it? And how many do you think we would need then? Twelve?
I have to count. There's one by the Otter, one by Waterfield Market, one by.
Post office.
Uh, the post office, there's two by the post office.
Okay, that's cool.
There's one outside of, near some, somewhere near Snuggs and, uh.
And Main Street Bistro.
Main Street Bistro, Gourmet Pizza, there's two, I believe.
There's one up, up by Shay O'Brien's.
Shay O'Brien, but there's also the one by P and G's, so that's ten.
And then down on North Front by Handmade.
Eleven, and then the three or four on Platicul is fifteen. We're probably looking at twenty, to be conservative.
You can't get many.
Well, if we, just count it fifteen, assuming we missed two or three, and then just to be conservative. Replacing twenty, and that's just garbage, that's not the recycling bins.
No, that's everything.
No, no, that's twenty garbage cans.
Oh, oh.
Plus, on top of that, you have the recycling bins.
Then you have the twenty recycling cans.
Or, and, but there's, they're, they're not always one-to-one matched up.
Oh, they aren't matched, no, no.
Right, but this, but if we're buying the double unit.
Then you have a match up, right?
Yeah.
Right, so you're going to do all the recycling.
I'm not, I'm not into compacting recycling, because that just promotes single stream and not recycling.
We only have single stream in Moster County, though.
The advantage of compacting the area on is you don't have to empty it as often.
Right, but then, I, I, I understand that. But, but if we.
See, when you take something this big and make it this big.
When you crush glass and cardboard together, the glass gets all inside the cardboard, and I asked John, John that, and he said that that wasn't an issue. And I, I, cause I thought it was too. I mean, Tim went to the facilities that are separating this, and there's like a guy in there separating all this stuff by hand. And you better be certain he is not picking out tiny shards of glass from cardboard.
When they, they have a big, what I would call a fan, but it's not a fan.
Well, I guess, you know, the trucks compacted anyway, though, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe it's, it's just, it's got this function of the pressure.
So, I don't think that's.
If you don't have a compressor of pressure enough to crush a glass bottle, it won't crush the glass, unless someone's putting in broken glass.
All right, I don't know. I, the thing is, I've heard mixed reviews about these things. I've heard they're an environmental scam, I've also heard they're great. So, I think, and, and I've done a little bit of research, I have here, I was just looking at it again. Um, there's a benefit cost analysis of big belly solar trash compactors in the city of Seattle Parks. It was done by Washington University, um, you know, I think, I think we should all read through these kinds of things before we make a decision. Because what if there's something that's similar but better, or a different way of doing this, and I mean.
I put this in the budget as I was asked to do to make my recommendation. Blue had it, part of the working budget. I don't think he actually included it into his budget. That is what we're discussing.
So, we have, but we have a couple of questions, that's all.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking, maybe.
The big question is whether we should do it all at once.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, like, cause we, you know, say we move forward with some kind of contract with one private hauler. And like you suggested, and I think that was a good suggestion, the cost of picking up our, our public, like, uh, waste and recycling becomes rolled into that cost. So, then we're not in a position where we are paying anybody overtime or anybody at all, if they're picking it up at no additional cost. And I don't know what our.
We're not ready there for that.
We're, we're not, but we're not far from it either. There's not a lot that goes into it, but putting out an RFP.
I still think, even if we went to municipal.
No, 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 not mu- not municipal waste hauling, contracting with private waste hauling.
Well, but for.
But it's different.
But.
Two species of the same animal.
Huh? I think we're semantic. My point is.
No, no, but it's not semantics, because we're not doing it ourselves as a municipality.
No, you're missing my point. It's still whether we use a private person for the, a contract for the whole municipal, okay? It still would be beneficial in terms of the way people approach, okay, to have the big bells, I think. I think that would lead to more respect for the community. I think when, I mean, we all go into other communities, okay? I'm sure we all can say which communities appear to take pride in themselves and which don't, or might suggest.
Right.
Okay, there's.
And I think having, having nicer looking bins is a bonus. I don't know if these are the right ones.
Well.
Because they also do not promote composting, and then you have food rotting for longer.
We, I just don't recommend it.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be recommending that as an experiment yet either. But, but I like your original idea of having a few of them.
And try it.
And trying it out without, uh.
Committing to all of them.
Without compacting any food stuffs.
Well, why don't, if we're gonna buy a couple, why don't we buy one composting one as, as part of the experiment? And put it by the Platicul eleven lot, where we have like five garbage.
I know, cause composting comes with significant education, and nobody's gonna do that.
It's an all or nothing kinda thing.
I don't think they're gonna look to see.
Nobody's gonna say, oh, this, well, well, maybe, maybe two out of five people will say, oh, I'm gonna compost in this one. And then the rest of the people put their regular garbage, and then it doesn't matter.
Later on, if we thought it would work, then to educate first.
Right, absolutely. Education is a huge piece of implementing composting.
Look, you know, this kinda stuff is, is working even in airports, where people are dashing from place to place. I happen to have spent a fair amount of time in airports lately.
I've seen them in, uh.
And it, I, from what I could see, they tend to work. That is, people are careful about what they put.
You on campus, I'm amazed.
So, I would try.
Campus has huge issues with who puts what in what container. This is the, one of the biggest issues with how, with whether or not recycling is at all implemented on campus, and certainly with composting. This, it's.
Oh, the composting is a problem.
Well, but recycling is a problem. The old, like, it works when there's like a slot, that bin that you put paper in, like, then nothing but paper or small things go in there.
Yeah, we're getting way off.
Well, well, we, we're kind of getting off, but we're, we're saying, you know, whether or not, I mean, I, I, I don't know if I like the idea that we're gonna have food that's compacted and sitting there rotting for a long period of time.
I would not wanna see that.
Right, but it's not about composting, it's about any garbage container, food products and waste go in there.
Well, you know.
So, it will be sitting there longer.
You can't have it both ways, Ariana, and you have to make a decision, I think, to try something and not reject it because.
I'm not rejecting it, I'm saying that we should all read the research that I've done.
I will read that.
Can you provide it to us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, it's easy, I can email you all the stuff.
I will read it.
But Jason, you, you think we oughta go with all of them and try that, or try the experimental?
How about this? Assuming Ariana's cost benefit research shows that this is a, a positive, then I think that if possible, we should replace all of them all at once. But.
I, I don't think that's a good idea.
That's just algebra, that's just a matter of what the cost benefit to Blue's budget is, that's all. I'm not saying we blow the bank on this, I'm saying.
I understand.
If we save a little to do a few, and we could save five figures doing all of them.
Yeah.
Or the payback period is a two to, two-year payback, or what, you know, something like that.
I think, if, what I'm proposing, the payback is immediate.
Right. And a two to three-year payback, a two to three-year payback may be worth replacing everything all at once, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but, but I do, I do work that, Jason.
I would do that next year.
Jason, I did work it for the three, and the payback is immediate.
Okay.
I don't know about doing all of them, cause I hadn't thought of that.
Katie, you've got that down as a question for Blue?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, what are we doing? Are we going to tentatively add three big belly unless your research shows that we're fulls?
It doesn't take research to show, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait.
I thought I'd put it in the positive.
Do, well, why don't we add it in, why don't we add it in tentatively? That way, it's always easier to take something else out.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm not like against, I'm far from against doing this. I've just heard mixed reviews.
We're just waiting for you to get to your, uh.
I've just heard mixed reviews, so I think that everybody should think about this. I'm, I'm not against it by any means.
So, let's.
My, my knee jerk reaction is, yes, I wanna do this, I just like to double.
Okay, but is it, is it okay, is it okay to add it into the budget now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or, okay, I don't know if you wanna be more careful and wait until we hear.
No, cause we can remove it.
Four thousand.
I think we should.
Recyclings.
Right.
We're taking out.
Big belly, all right, I.
Four thousand overtime.
It's the smart belly, not the normal double sign.
And four thousand out of recycling contracting, so we paid for it.
Okay, and Blue's fine with those numbers, you talked to him?
I don't know. Whether he's five, four, I, he never said whether he was. I don't, I don't think Blue wants to change his way.
Blue does not like change, we all know this.
He does not like change.
We all know this.
Can we be kind and say that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, he laughs about it, he jokes about it.
But this, I think, is very important for this community to do, so.
Okay, so, what other notes do people have?
Flash, I have an, I have some more.
You have some more?
Believe it or not. I, I did what I was hoping.
Two more pages of notes to do?
No.
Oh.
I don't, we need that, we need that.
I, I have one, gonna go.
All right, with, yeah, you do use.
I, I don't know the answer to this, because what, I want us to implement the parking, doesn't matter what lobby does. I wanna move the machine this year, if we can, to the center of the, of the municipal lot. So, people don't have to get out of their cars, find the machine, and then increase it to four hours. And I sent Blue an email asking him, did he think we could get this done before this year ended? Because we come out, it's in the budget for this year.
Oh.
Okay.
Can we get it done this year, we already decided?
That's what I wanna find out. If we can get it done this year, I wanna do it this year.
Well, you've got that note now, Katie?
Oh, she just.
Katie! But I sent him an email and he.
If it's in his budget year, the ma- imagine, he's not someone who usually, he doesn't usually drag his feet on things.
Well, yeah, but he's got a lot.
But it is something new, and he doesn't like change.
Oh, no, no, he knows about this. He, he was in on it when Ariana and I met with him about the parking plan. This is one, the next step in the parking plan.
I bet he wouldn't have any.
But it's a question of whether we can get it done in this budget year.
If we have the money budgeted, then yeah.
We have the money budgeted.
Then what's, I don't see what the issue is.
Well, I don't know what.
He's running out of time.
Remember what prep work there is to get done, I don't wanna ask, I don't know whether he has to have the company come and do it.
There's no way he could do it for another few weeks anyway, because the ground, it's not, it's not warm enough to do asphalt work.
We don't own a machine.
No one's making asphalt anymore.
So to speak.
Yeah.
I don't know whether the company that put it in has to move it, or whether we can move it. Yes, there are logistical issues.
To make sure that, make sure that Blue can get the, the parking thing.
He has an email from.
Platicul lot done this, in this fiscal year.
And he's supposed to answer that to me, Katie, whether we can do it in this like, get it done in this budget year.
And just have him cock the whole board since it was brought up.
Yeah, everybody.
All right, what's your, let's get through your list, Sally.
Oh, I am not in favor.
And, and try to use bu- budget codes if you know.
Thirty-six twenty. If you wanna use the money to increase broken, that's fine with me, but I do not think building department should have a vehicle.
Yeah, I've got a note for, and a question mark for that. What do you remember about that conversation, Rebecca?
Wait, I'm sorry, say this.
I'm sorry, thirty-six twenty.
Vehicle.
They proposed to have, um, a building apartment, a village sedan, basically, that would be, no one would take it home, but when they were here to use for inspections and travel and such.
And what we had said, which we have not implemented, like they were supposed to walk. So.
They do walk, they do walk within.
They do walk, then I would think any mileage that we would pay them to go to peripheral, out of our walking scheme.
But remember too, even if you're walking within a mile, it takes about twenty minutes to walk a mile, twenty minutes there and back, that's forty minutes, that's a whole other inspection you could have gotten done in that workday.
I'm not in favor of supplying them a vehicle, I think that's wrong.
Well, I don't think it's wrong, morally wrong, that could be not a good idea for us.
They're used.
What do the rest of you think?
Well, I'm looking at the, is this projected cost realistic?
I have not.
Looking at, um, looking at state bid, but also at, um, other municipalities that have vehicles to get, getting rid of. They're getting rid of, like, a lot of police departments, because they have to keep their vehicles in really like, a, the new year, because they've gotta be using them all the time. Uh, the town clerk has, has a, has a town car, not a town car. Oh, no? Well, they used to, yeah, but it was, it was an old police department car that they, they, like, when we get our trucks, we put them out to bid.
Yeah.
You can just put a sealed envelope, I'll pay you this much for it, and you find an old, the truck, car like that, that's good for.
They want a lease.
Good for bombing around town here, but not good for.
I, I'm seeing this as a, as a lease.
Yeah.
At a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
We don't pay lightly.
I think that was just their guess about what they were looking to get, that's their best estimate.
And that's not gas. That's not gas.
No?
Or anything else.
Right.
Yeah, they would have to have a, um, expense line.
Okay, but so, that aside, philosophically, if it's a no-go, then it doesn't matter the numbers. Is this a useful use of taxpayer money? I mean, it's not like we'd be the first to do it, lots of communities do this kind of thing.
Um, you know, I, I'm a person who worked for the state for a long period of time, not even just New York state, I've worked for several states. And I had a car at my disposal, or I used a car that was at a. Yeah, from a pool. So I found it to be useful. Uh, at the same time, I'm a person who always lived close to where I worked, so I walked most of the time. But I still use the car some of the time.
You gotta go to a meeting.
But this isn't gonna be something that would transport people to and from work, it would be while they're at work.
Yes, so this would be getting someone from here to.
Bondicue view and back.
Bondicue view.
I mean, I think for, for the amount of time that they, that people spend walking, the employees spend walking. Versus the amount of time that they would have to go there, it doesn't seem worth it.
How many inspections a year?
Well, that's the other thing.
Does it take to?
If, well.
You heard once told me that if, if there were no, no vacation days taken and no sick time taken. And, and, well, at the time, we had a full-time building inspector, he said we would have to do four point five rental inspections per day to do all of them. I don't, I, I could do so quickly.
And we sometimes do, and we sometimes do more than that.
Inspection, because Ben Miller says.
I'm sure we do more than that, I'm just saying, you know, if it was average every day.
But Ariana, do you remember Ben Miller sitting in our committee meeting? I think he said it took an hour for that whole complex to be done.
Hmm, right, well, but, but, but we weren't talking about the amount of time each one takes, we were talking about. If they were spaced out evenly over those days.
Spread it out like butter.
Um, four point five times five times fifty-two is one thousand one hundred and seventy, so that doesn't include the federal holidays, for instance.
For example.
Um, but, so, you know, even if we rounded down to a conservative one thousand, um, that would be the number of inspections a year.
Uh, just see, to, as a footnote to all of this, uh, they did budget for five hundred dollars in fuel, it's just on the back page.
I see that.
Contractual. And I, I'm trying to see, I don't see the mileage, I guess they wouldn't put both in. I'm curious what we pay in mileage now.
I need to find it.
I don't think it's on here, because they put the vehicle instead of the mileage.
For most places, they're now budgeting one fifty-five cents.
I think it's up to fifty-eight.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-eight now?
I believe so, yeah.
That's why it's gonna be cheaper for me to fly to LA than to get to DC, than to drive to DC.
Yeah.
Sally, do you see it on those other sheets?
You know what?
The yellow?
Hey, Katie?
I'm looking at the federal, um.
Oh, no, not the re, reimbursement rate, could you just make a note to get, um, last year's mileage expend, expenses from building department?
Sure. Um, it's currently fifty-five, fifty-six cents.
Right, fifty-six cents, but the total amount budgeted is reasonable.
I'm sorry, a penny off.
I bet, huh?
Go ahead. I'm surprised, actually, because my memory would have been.
I remembered, I remembered it accurately, but entirely by accident. So can we table this until we get the mileage then, until, let's see, apple to apple.
Very surprised with the mileage and that they can exceed twenty-eight hundred dollars.
I would be surprised too, but let's see what the number is. Let's see what the number looks like. Cause we're, we'll, we'll really only have a handful of topics to, to discuss at the next meeting. And I guess I'll probably have Blue and Nancy there.
Yeah, Sally's.
What's your next, Sally? Unless it's time to take a break?
No, I think I'm, I'm to the questions that aren't mine, but more, we have the money for the generator already, because we bonded for it. But if, and this, Rebecca, close your ears, Ariana, close your ears. Uh, if, do we need money if we are seriously considering converting to gasoline? To natural gas?
I can't remember, I remember the, the buy, the payback was four to five years, I don't remember if there was anything in the budget.
We need money in the budget for that.
I can't call you anything, but you're really in, Katie. Just make another question to, to kick to Blue.
Okay.
Is that money in this year's, in the, in the thirteen, fourteen fiscal year budget?
And you asked me to remind you, did he budget any money for finishing the energy audit recommendations?
Well, that was my question, there was forty-two hundred for window replacements in the DPW garage. And I was wondering if those were, were those windows?
Yeah, but that's not the firehouse and all the others.
Yeah, but that's part of, but, well, but he did put in, he did put in.
Put some in.
In buildings, in buildings and grounds, but more in this year.
Right.
And, and, and what number is that?
The question that you asked me to remind you.
I know, and I didn't ask him.
Was.
And write it down.
Did he put all the money in? For all of the five things that were left to be done?
Windows, replacement windows for garages on sixteen twenty.
Yeah, but, but Ariana, there were other ones, the firehouse.
I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just letting you know the windows I was.
Is the money, all, all the money in for the rest of those five steps.
I'm there on that.
I don't think, well, you, you're clear on the question.
I'm there on the question.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we didn't, we got this budget before we said to do that, so.
He, he should have known to do it.
Well, but it wasn't.
It was.
Hasn't done for.
It was, it was on his radar, because, because in answering your questions and digging out the original.
Oh, okay.
He had gone through it, so that by the time he sat down and said, yeah.
Oh.
He actually asked me, do you want me to do this stuff or not, and I said, yes, let's.
Would you believe I'm done?
No?
I was given, um, this about thermostats. I don't know if I'm even into it, but somebody gave it to me and, um, it's Nest. Um, it's, it's about thermostats that you can control on your phone.
Awesome.
Um, and, and like, and you can control it from here, um, basically, we could pass this around. It would be a regular round dial that could be turned up, and then if, you know, if it's like ten PM and somebody checks on their phone. What the thermostat says at the little tall and realizes it's high.
Turned down.
It can be turned down.
That would be really good.
It's all, I believe it's also programmable.
And that's one of the five things that hasn't been done, the thermostat.
But so, I don't know, I don't know if we should just go with something that is straight programmable, where it can be turned up or down while we're here. But then.
It come midnight and automatically.
Exactly.
Midnight to seven AM.
Right.
Isn't that what that does?
No.
Okay.
You can get those at Lowe's though, you can get the programmable thermostats at Lowe's.
Right, no, it's, it's not like we, and we just don't have them.
Right.
It's not like we're hard to get, we just don't have them.
Cause you could leave it down all day, and then Katie, an hour, say, before a meeting, could just, from home, tell it to go up to whatever.
I'm actually here now.
She might set it at a hundred and ten for some of us.
Well, but then, then the question becomes, you know, how many phones can it connect to, whose phone should it connect to? Well, I mean, these are, that's the issue with technology.
Right, but my point, I think as long.
What if it could be five phones and we get new phones?
Now, if somebody fails to turn it down, which we're all capable of doing.
Anyone could forget, yes.
Yeah.
You, you know, and it just automatically turns down.
Also, because we don't know, you know, there's, obviously, we know that we've got the calendar, but in terms of different groups meeting in here. We don't know what time they leave, we don't know, you know, that type.
We guesstimate, when we put, when we put it on the calendar, we guesstimate.
Right, but if somebody's meeting goes longer than anticipated, we don't know that. Unless we're launching from home.
I wanna finish him off.
Let's add this to the, to the, let's see what Blue seems to think about this. Oh, and to answer your question, Ariana, about the audit. I think I'm reading this right, because I, I photocopy the same page, different page on the same piece of paper, but, um, eighty, eight, A sixteen twenty. Right, right above replacement windows, you see building repairs. Thing has gone from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. So you put in another thousand dollars to do bits and pieces from the audit.
Sweet, won't be enough.
But for the thermostats, for the.
A new thermostat, I would think we should replace them all, and I would suspect they probably cost about five, the time we're talking.
All right, well, that's another thing then, Katie, we're gonna have Blue spec out the costs to do everything.
For the audit stuff that hasn't been done in what is new.
All right, Ariana, was it, did you have anything else?
Um, I don't think I did, but.
There's one other thing while you're looking, I think I put in sidewalk, more sidewalk money to go directly to the reserve. If someone has had.
I discovered, I discovered three things.
Um, the less are two hundred and fifty a piece.
Ariana, before we ever took office, the prior board, and so this doesn't affect the budget. The prior board authorized five curb cuts. From the sidewalk reserve fund, I don't think those curb cuts were ever done, and those are the curb cuts. That you and Brian were very concerned about in terms of crosswalks.
Which, uh, where are they?
Pardon?
Where are they?
But I don't, the budget didn't show where. I found in minutes before we all took office, that the prior board had already authorized. Five sidewalk cuts.
Huh.
Curb cut from the reserve fund.
And it was not implemented?
It's never done. So the ones that you thought about wanting to do, okay, don't have to be a budget item. Cause they're already authorized from the reserve fund.
All right.
So it's a matter of coordinating the ones that you recommended to all of us. With the sidewalk reserve fund, also. We're all done with the curb cut on Henry the Boys, right?
Yes.
For that.
No.
No, it's not.
It was not painted, and there, there aren't signs.
You gotta wait till the string.
That's, that's what I, I mean, that's what I told.
But the curb cut did happen, the actual physical change.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes.
That would be one, this already authorized, and then the ones on Main Street that you were concerned about, with that butt out, you're not at Church Street. I forget where you, I didn't go back and look.
Oh, um.
Those are already authorized and paid for from the reserve.
Church Street going to where we wanna close off that, that driveway.
But we don't know whether that's gonna happen or not, I think we're to close that off anyway, Jason.
Which one?
The, what do we call it, the driveway off Main Street into the parking lot behind?
I, uh, I had all that information from Joe Ariel, and I have, neither Will nor I haven't been able to get, get it from him. So I may have to, we'll do it all over again. That, and, uh, and the deed, the title search to look into what would be required to close Church Street, like a bunch of us have been talking about for years.
And he didn't do that.
And, and the, uh, I had him draft me a memo, he was supposed to have drafted me a memo right before he left about. What we do about the fact that a, a private farm is using public land to farm across the river at our boat launch.
What?
Yeah.
The boat launch on the other side of the river, if you go up toward Shivertown, Springtown. You make that right and go all the way, it's not maintained, it's like you can, there's danger to get a boat in, but if you look at a, at a parcel map, we own about fifty yards on either side of that road. And it gets planted and harvested right up to the road. So I think at the time it was the Watchtower Farms, so I had personally a problem with especially a religious organization making private profit on public land.
But they may not have ever known.
But, and that's what I said, and that's a big plus, so I wanted to see the title search and, and, and have a letter to them saying, I think this is what's going on. Before I brought it to the board, so, but all that stuff, we're still waiting for, and Joe has not returned my calls or bills.
Tell him that everything had to be turned over.
Well, I, I did, and Will did, and we're, we're gonna try it one more time. So is there anything else?
You should go to the bathroom, young lady, that's what happens in school.
Actually, I just wanted to share with the board one tiny little bit of information that was shared with me today. Um, one of the energy auditors who had submitted a proposal called me to see what the process was, I explained what the public record is, is that we're fulfilling the one from two thousand and four. Then the board will revisit it, revisit the other proposals that were submitted. And he said, great, I'm glad that you're doing that, just to let you know in general, an audit, an energy audit like that has a shelf life of four years, so if you're doing two thousand and four.
Right.
You probably still have more stuff you need to do.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to give that information to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's what my thoughts were at the time, but, you know.
Do you want to do this before, this thing?
I didn't realize so much of what I had been done from the old one.
No, let's finish the budget and then come out.
All right.
Uh, but let's take a five minute break, that's right. I just can't jump today. Cause like the apartment, the streets, all the, all the structure, the companies, the, the product investment, no public. I, I met with the UN Conference of Mayors in oh five, and we ended up becoming friends, arguing for tougher green building standards, but. The difference between cities that are far ahead in one thing and so far behind in another, depending on the part of the world you're in.
Ew.
Anyway, all right.
Ew, I better go to the doctors.
You wanna say that on camera?
I only have, I only had three questions, I really do think it would be good, once we've talked, to invite. Don Christian or his designated, who might be Mr., whose name is on this, provided the draft for him. To our next meeting, oh, winners, rich winners. To clarify some of these things, one of my questions was, does local zoning law carry weight? In other words, and it sort of goes along corollary to what you were asking, Ariana, and that is. If the company buys the property to become an incubator or whatever we wanna call that. Do they pay property tax or are they exempt from only business income tax? Okay, I think, I'm not clear on that.
I, I feel like there's going to be a lot of gray area with this, you know, I, like, what, what Don Christian said to me, and I know we just said this, but now I'll say it for the camera. Is that the incentives are on income tax and sales tax.
Right.
Um, you know, but I, I, what, you know, the example I was given, the idea that, say, say I wanna open up a business. And I'm partnering with a college, we're gonna incorporate their different academic disciplines and, you know, have, uh, jobs for college graduates. So I make significant improvements to a building in order to accommodate this particular business, and maybe there's some kind of specific technology or lab related to it. Then is that part of it, part of the assessed value of the building that is taxable? Or is that part of it, is the building at its previous assessed value what I'd be taxed on?
Good question.
Or, you know, I think this is like, it, there, you know, there's been so much gray area with the tax incentives for. This community in relation to the college, and I would like to have very specific answers.
So that, I think, is a really good question, yeah.
And I, I'd like to make it clear to him and to the others who listen, that we just can't afford more tax breaks.
The thing is, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that that is, uh, lost on them, I think that their, their perspective. And way of going about it is, it, that's just not what it's about.
See, in my, in my experience, and this is the third president? Second or third college president?
Definitely the second.
Gotta be the second.
Yeah, second, I can't remember who's before Steve Hoskins.
It was Boeing.
Yeah, so three, I dealt pretty close with Boeing. Um, anyway, the point is, is that for, as good people as they are, their. Their planning and vision doesn't extend past the campus boundaries. So just a small example is, you know, they had the idea of moving all the parking lots away from kind of the, the downtown of campus or in the humanities, move them out farther by the gym. Somehow thinking that that meant people were gonna park farther away and walk, when all it did was congest these streets even more and eat up more of our parking. Because it didn't occur to them that people will park as close as they can, and that means off campus as well as on campus, so they only really thought about on campus. So it's, I have, I wanna make sure that these points get reiterated, I don't expect them to get it.
I, I, yeah, I don't think that's a good example though, because it's up to us to legislate that, it's not up to them to decide where students park on or off campus.
Sure, my point is just, and as example of, of the planning that goes into this, is set campus centric planning.
I see what you're saying, but I don't think that, I think that example is. I see what you're saying, but I don't think that, I think that example is, you, you know, their, their plan, their job is to plan on campus. And our job is to plan for the village community by.
So if we don't want parking on residential streets, you restrict them to residential parking.
Yeah, but, so we're on a separate topic, and I think we should, I think we should do that. Um, but so, you know, what, what they're doing now though is, it's not going to be on campus. What they're, the businesses are going to be off campus. And he said that he's not looking for the college to be in the business of starting businesses. The only place on campus that this is going to be going on is within the, the new engineering building when it is, when it is revamped. And they're going to have some kind of laboratories there. So it could be something like a business incubator, but it is not going to house a business.
Oh, okay.
Well, he did, he did mention that one, uh, uh, little house that they purchased right on the edge of campus.
Right, sixty two.
As a potential, if I'm remembering correctly, as a, a potential small business.
But that's an example of a property going off the tax rolls altogether.
Well, they've already purchased it, the college bought it. It is off the tax rolls.
That's not the question we're with.
Right.
And just, I, I know that property and it's big. The, the, um, the footprint of, of the building is very small compared to the amount of acreage.
Right. It goes all the way back.
Something that we have to...
So what do we wanna do about, about this? Are we gonna ask Don to come to our next meeting?
I think we should.
Well, the thing is, we have to have our comments in by April second. So if we haven't come to our next meeting, when are we gonna vote on what our comments are?
We're gonna have to draft comments because that, that's March twenty sixth, right?
Yeah.
March twenty sixth. So that, that would give us zero time to have a special meeting.
But we could do it on the twen- we could have a special meeting.
Seven days, twenty eight.
I think we could pretty much draft, once we know the answers to, and he may not even know the answers himself.
Well, what if we asked, what if we asked them the questions that we have-
Send them now.
In advance, so that-
Send them now.
The only thing they'd be doing at the, at the meeting is answer additional questions.
I think that's a good idea, to, to send the questions, inviting them, these are the questions that we have to be, we come prepared to answer. Because one of the things that I think we ought to do is encourage them, if they are thinking of trying to attract businesses, having those businesses located in our new B three. I mean, rather than higgly piggly pop,
Yeah.
encourage them to, and there's a lot of land that is not developed or is going to be redeveloped, and encourage them to think about using our B three for, in their planning.
I like that.
Yeah, I, I also like that because, um, we could have, we could have more control over what the B three ends up looking like. If this is part of what happens.
That's the, the corollary question. Do local zoning laws and codes and building codes and all of our stuff, do they apply?
They would have to.
I would be surprised if they don't. Otherwise, they could put anything they, if, yeah, then they could put anything they want. They could put a smokestack, you know.
Well, then maybe they could.
That's, that's status quo, if it's on campus.
But if it's not on campus.
Unless they get, they're in that determination, that land use determination at the SUNY Central when Seeker on startup New York applications. In which case, it's SUNY Central who does the land use plan.
See, that's my big question. Is do our secret reviews and all of the our zone, our part zone?
So that this, this is a vital question for us to ask. Do all, for all businesses involved in this New York-
Startup New York.
Startup New York program, are they all subject to local zoning-
And planning review.
And planning review.
You know, uh, 'cause I'm curious about what CUNY does, also a state university. But their buildings are all interspersed among all of the private owned buildings.
Yeah, but that's it, that's it.
When you develop that, you go to the city.
That's New York.
Oh, yeah, I know, but in terms of land use, land use patterns and who runs the review.
Yeah.
When CUNY Hunter wants to build an annex building two blocks over, does SUNY Central run the, run the Seeker or does the City of New York run the Seeker? You know, that's an example of what we're doing.
An example, actually.
So that's one question. Two question is, would they be willing to concentrate their efforts in our B three and attached is R B three, Katie? That we would attach it right to our question sheet.
So Katie, do you wanna send out, um, even before the minutes, if they're not, if they're long, too long? Uh, but send this list of questions to the Village Board tomorrow to make sure you got it transcribed right?
Yep.
And then if there's no correction, send it right under the college president?
Yep.
Thanks.
And as per the board's instructions last week, we've already invited President Christian to the next week's meeting.
Oh, we have already?
Both by phone and by phone invitation.
I think Tom's idea of sending the questions at halftime, so that those can be answered. And then that, they might generate more questions.
Right.
But at least we'll have the basic questions answered.
And we're not getting a canned presentation.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
So you, and you've got-
You're really close to, huh?
And then the other thing, it seems to me, is, wouldn't it make more sense that they would look, aside from our B three? I mean, the, the suggested properties they're talking about are all over the place.
Yes, they are.
And that seems to me to be a very...
Well, again, you know, what, what's he supposed to do? He's, he's scanning the, the area to see what's a possible and available location. So he's got somebody who's doing all the legwork. What's he gonna do? That's, that's where the-
Well, a lot of these are not in the village, so they don't even-
Many, yeah.
He said it's within five miles and eight miles around the campus.
Yeah, that's, that's like the secondary, the secondary range. The primary range is within a mile and then the secondary ranges.
But my question then becomes, within the village, aside from our B three, do we want them to concentrate in one area? As properties might become available that are above the campus? Do we want that to be on thirty two? Do we want that to be on two oh eight rather than our residential streets? You understand?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Is that a worthy question?
Well, I think that any, anything that we've zoned as commercial or mixed use should be, you know, anything that's residential shouldn't be allowed to be on this.
I, I don't know that we have that call.
Well, we might though. I mean, we were already asking, are all of these businesses subject to local zoning and planning?
And I think also, a question to ask is, is if the college is intention to buy more property for the purposes of this program?
Well, my-
But that's the big difference, man.
My quick reading is that if, if, this is an alliance between the college and businesses, right? Am I, am I not right? It's the businesses that would be connecting to the college. The, the reward upfront to the businesses is the tax forgiveness in income and sales tax. Is that sufficient?
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm going a step further and I'm saying, I'm a business, okay? I really want to get connected with the college. I am going to provide the college with all the three D equipment it needs to do the three D startup. We'll use that as an example. However, Tom, that's a big commitment on my part to you, SUNY New Falls. So how about you buy the land and then I'll put up my company?
Well, let's ask them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna make this not look like, but I really do want some defined parameters and to understand what we're really talking about here.
I, I want, look, you know, I, I don't know what their resources are, but I have been the president of a state college. And we didn't have any money that would have permitted us to go buy land in anticipation of a payoff. Uh, now, maybe SUNY is, but I was also in SUNY for fifteen years. And I would be startled to learn that they have available funds uh, for projects that are likely to arise like this. Rather than plan for ten years in advance.
Yeah, but one of the purposes and the mission of the foundation is to do exactly that. There would be nothing, nothing to preclude the foundation from doing it.
If the foundation, if this, if the, if the particular New Falls Foundation, or if it's part of the SUNY Foundation, if they have a lot of extra money, then of course they could do projects like that.
And it goes off the tax rolls.
But of course it goes off the tax rolls.
That's my, that's my question.
If it's owned by a, a foundation, and it's a charitable, quote unquote, foundation, then of course it goes off the tax rolls.
All right, so, so we've got a list of questions. Is there anything we need to add? All right, anything we could add to the list of questions?
Did you want to specify any more about Seeker?
No, just who runs it. That's all I need, is all I want.
Actually, you know, in addition, like Ariana, we're just having this little conversation. Um, I would also like to ask what their intentions are with that property on thirty two? If they intend to further build on it? Um, 'cause I, I just said, it's, it's like big enough to put a hotel on, you know?
Oh.
It's a property.
Like, seriously?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What did they buy it for?
Right. Yeah, it's huge. It's part of, um, an old orchard. And it's got, uh, you know, um, a two family house and a back building as well. So, I'd be curious.
Is that two family house now? It wasn't.
Well, it was a, it, there was an apartment downstairs in the basement, basically, and then a house up-
That was our group, Noah's old house.
Yeah.
She was a teacher in the school district.
Okay. I just know her daughter. Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, and I actually went there to help them to move out, so. The tenant as well as the other people.
There is that arm in the back. I had forgotten about that.
Yeah, there's all sorts of stuff.
Um, well, then I'll move, we adopt bills and claims.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I get the questions to us, Katie, and then we will promise to review them.
As, as soon as we finish up here tomorrow, we will do that and I will do that and...
Okay, so move to go into executive session?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And thanks, you can, uh, we're not gonna make any decisions out of executive session.
Not at all?
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we're not voting on the budget.